So just as we talked about before with the cyclical nature of Revelation, what we have seen with the bowls of wrath is that we have come back around to a final battle that will be ending in God's favor, right? Chapter 12, we had Jesus appear. And here we have it again. And then we're going to kind of walk through, even in 17, we see victory of the Lamb. So it's something that we're just continually revisiting. But what we're going to see in these final chapters is that the spiraling is getting tighter, that as we're talking about the information, it's zeroing in on a couple of these core events and individuals. So what John is seeing, what he is translating for us in what he sees, writing it down so that those in the seven churches can read and understand is who these people are and how this is all going to play out. So yeah, so it's getting exciting. You're just going to have to wait three months before, you know, we really get into that. So just kidding. But all right, well, let's start with a word of prayer and then we will pick up if anybody has any questions on 12 through 16. But no questions, then we'll move right into 17. All right, let's pray. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Thank you for the time to study your word, that we can do so in peace, that we can do this really at our leisure. But we want to do this as an act of worship to you, as a means of transformation, that your spirit would work within us as we read these words, as we process them with our mind, that they would go to our heart, that we would understand the events that have happened and will happen, events that are happening. And that we would prioritize things in this life as you would have them. Help us to see the world around us as you see that. Help us to live differently, to inspire others, brothers and sisters in Christ, but also to challenge a world that is against you. Father, we pray that your spirit would guide and direct us through the study tonight and that you would be glorified. We pray all of these things in Jesus's name. All right, did anybody have any questions from last week about Armageddon? Remember the paper in front of you, the chart, the final battle? Did anybody not get a copy of this? We had it out there on the stand. So this is actually from Dr. Schnabel, 40 Questions About the End Times. This is a really like just solid resource. It's, it is academic material written at a very basic and popular level. Actually, the whole series of the 40 questions series is really good. So just, but yeah, it's good stuff. So, and actually, I just seen Dr. Schnabel had come up with a, another resource. It was like the mission of the church and it's like, like 700 pages or something. So, but I resisted buying it. So it's my win for the week. It was real, I was so close. I was like, Billy, can I take a birthday advance? So, but anyways, so yeah, any questions on Armageddon? So it's just important to understand when we go to verse 12, "The sixth angel poured out his bowl on the great river, the Euphrates, and its water was dried up, so that the way would be prepared for the kings from the east." So the kings of the east, these are not the good guys. These are all against Yahweh, against Messiah, against God's people, right? So there is an alliance being formed among all of these rulers, government leaders, right? So once again, we're just kind of, let's familiarize with the language. When we talk about kings and kingdoms, it sounds like fairy tales, right? But when we're talking like, these are government leaders, these spirits went out to stir them up, to bring up these kings of the east, these leaders from the east, to unite against God's people. So as we've seen with trumpets, with some of the other judgments, what follows is an unpacking of that sixth judgment. And so 13 through 16 can be seen as that further unpacking. And so that's where we get the details for Armageddon. "And I saw coming out of the mouth of the dragon, and out of the mouth of the beast, and out of the mouth of the false prophet, three unclean spirits like frogs, for they are the spirits of demons, performing signs which go out to the kings of the whole world to gather them together for the war of the great day of God, the Almighty. Behold, I am coming like a thief; blessed is the one who stays awake and keeps his clothes, so that he will not walk about naked, and men will not see his shame. And they gathered them together to the place, which in Hebrew is called Har-Magedon." Then, verse 17. Actually, I think what we'll do, I'll read 17 through 21 and then circle back to 17, just so we can keep it in context. "Then the seventh angel poured out his bowl upon the air, and a loud voice came out of the temple from the throne, saying, 'It is done.' And there were flashes of lightning, and sounds, and peals of thunder; and there was a great earthquake, such as there had not been since man came to be upon the earth. So great an earthquake was it, and so mighty! The great city was split into three parts, and the cities of the nations fell. Babylon the Great was remembered before God to give her the cup of the wine of his fierce wrath; and every island fled away, and mountains were not found; and huge hailstones, about one hundred pounds each, came down from heaven upon men; and men blasphemed God because of the plague of the hail, because its plague was extremely severe." All right, so verse 17, "Then the seventh angel poured out his bowl upon the air, and a loud voice came out of the temple from the throne, saying, 'It is done.'" So it's not surprising that there are a number of similarities between the last trumpet and the last bowl, the final bowl. They both bring history to a close. Following the seventh trumpet, loud voices in heaven proclaimed the realization of the kingdom of God. So let's go to chapter 11, starting at verse 15. "Then the seventh angel sounded, and there were loud voices in heaven, saying, 'The kingdom of the world has become the kingdom of our Lord and of his Christ, and he will reign forever and ever.' And the twenty-four elders who sit on their thrones before God fell on their faces and worshipped God, saying, 'We give you thanks, O Lord God the Almighty, who are and who were, because you have taken your great power and have begun to reign.' And the nations were enraged, and your wrath came, and the time came for the dead to be judged, and the time to reward your bond servants, the prophets, and the saints, and those who fear your name, the small and the great, and to destroy those who destroyed the earth. And the temple of God, which is in heaven, was opened, and the ark of his covenant appeared in his temple; and there were flashes of lightning, and sounds, and peals of thunder, and an earthquake, and a great hailstorm." Does that sound familiar? Yeah, so we're talking about the same event, it is reinforcing this. Now, has anybody ever thought of that, noticed that before, before this, before we got into this study? Anybody seen those similarities and the overlap? So, so there in chapter 11, we have kind of a repeat of all of this. "So likewise, the seventh bowl is followed by a loud voice, with the heavenly temple declaring God's purpose accomplished. Judgment falls upon the entire earth, and there are flashes of lightning, rumbles, and peals of thunder, along with the greatest of all earthquakes, and tremendous hailstorms." So the seventh bowl is poured out into the air, the atmosphere that surrounds the earth. So before we had the bowls poured out on the earth itself, on the waters, on celestial bodies, and here we have the sky. Does anybody actually have a different word for sky? Mid-heaven, maybe?
Which verse?
It would be 17.
Air.
Air.
Was it 11 or back to 16?
Oh, I'm sorry, chapter 16, verse 17. Lost everybody on that one. My bad. No, no, I'm sorry. Sky, okay. Sky or air. "So as the seventh bowl is poured out into the air, the atmosphere that surrounds the earth, a loud voice from the heavenly sanctuary proclaims, 'All is over. The seven plagues have run their course, and the human race stands on the threshold of eternity.'" The loud voice is the voice of God. The blending of heavenly sanctuary and throne room was seen in chapter 7, verse 15, and chapter 8, verses, verse 5 as well. So we actually have the voice of God here, coming from the throne, declaring that it is done, or all is over. Done, this is it. Verse 18, "And there were flashes of lightning, and sounds, and peals of thunder; and there was a great earthquake, such as there had not been since man came to be upon the earth. So great an earthquake was it, and so mighty!" So here we have the divine proclamation is accompanied by flashes of lightning, rumbles, and peals of thunder, the same type of storm-theophany, storm-theophany. We encounter in similar scenes in chapter 4, verse 5, chapter 8, verse 5, and chapter 11, verse 19. We also see this in Exodus. So let's go to Exodus, chapter 19. Some of you are waiting on it, I'm sure. And the whole idea behind this is that when God speaks, all of these other elements are communicating that, are coming across in that way, that that's how it's heard. And so it's identified as storm-theophany, that this is the revelation of God as he speaks. So verse 16 through 18. "So it came about on the third day, when it was morning, that there were thunder and lightning flashes, and a thick cloud upon the mountain, and a very loud trumpet sound, so that all the people who were in the camp trembled. And Moses brought the people out of the camp to meet God, and they stood at the foot of the mountain. Now Mount Sinai was all in smoke, because Yahweh descended upon it in fire, and its smoke ascended like the smoke of a furnace, and the whole mountain quaked violently." That was just because of the presence of God. So there you go. Learn a new phrase, storm-theophany. "So the earth is rocked with an earthquake far greater than any since the human race has inhabited the earth. The severity of the earthquake is emphasized by the statement, 'No earthquake like it has ever occurred since man had been on earth. So tremendous was the quake.'" This would have a vivid impact upon people living in a century that had experienced a great number of severe earthquakes. Does everybody remember, we talked about that with the seven churches, that many of those churches, those cities in that area in Asia Minor had experienced extreme earthquakes, where a third of the city was devastated, or more. Verse 19, "The great city was split into three parts, and the cities of the nations fell. Babylon the Great was remembered before God to give her the cup of the wine of his fierce wrath." So the great city that is split into three parts is undoubtedly to be identified as Rome, Rome, Rome. I give you Rome. Cause who's the bad guy in John's time? Rome, Nero. So I mean, we just, it just fits. It's perfect, right? And now, even if there was maybe a different emperor or something like that, it's fine. But what we see fitting all of this is Rome. Who was occupying Palestine or the land of Israel at that time? Rome. Who was oppressing the people at that time? Rome. Who was going to destroy the city of Jerusalem just a few decades after Jesus's ascension? Rome. So most definitely the bad guy. So this follows from the fact that in the following chapter, Rome is repeatedly referred to as the great city. So in the next chapter, it's in verse 10, 16, 18, 19, and 21. "The subsequent reference in the same verse to Babylon does not imply yet another different This is kind of the intertwining of symbolism. Think about how much John is pulling from the Old Testament. He himself being Jewish and the revelation, understanding what's going on. Who is the big bad guy in the Old Testament for the land of Judah? It was Babylon. Persia came later. Assyria, I mean wiped out the north, but it was Babylon that was the big threat to the south, to the southern kingdom of Judah. "So for John the illusion would be to Rome as the center of satanic power and oppression against the fledgling church. The division of the great city into three parts indicates the completeness of its destruction." That all the cities of the nations fall with Rome indicates the dominant role of the great capital in its network of imperial communications. So what he's envisioning is that as Rome is destroyed and divided into three parts, all of the other cities that are really just extensions of the power of Rome, power centers, right? All of those fall as well. So what is completely being dismantled here is the powers of the world, of the forces of evil against God, not in a metaphysical sense, but in a very real sense. That as they were going out to unite the world, to go against God's people, and what we could understand is the Lamb leading God's people, God steps into this dimension and wrecks everything, including their plans. And that's, and that's the importance, right? To kind of tie a few of these other things together, the storm-theophany. It's God's presence on Mount Sinai, and all of a sudden, the atmosphere is ignited. There is smoke, this dark cloud of presence, there's earthquakes, just because God stepped into this dimension, into his creation, God himself. So then, as everybody's brought together, the cities, which human creation, right? Man's creation, cities, whereas God has made the natural environment, cities being the product of man, have been completely destroyed. "Then in the midst of all of this, God remembers to give Rome the wine cup of his passionate wrath." Another translation. "The wine cup of his passionate wrath. 'No longer does the kindness and patience of God intended to lead people to repentance,' Romans, chapter 2, verse 4, 'restrain his righteous indignation against all who have, by their own free will, decided irrevocably for evil. If God were not to punish unrighteousness, the concept of a moral universe would have to be discarded.'" God is not making these people rebel. They have chosen to do so. They have chosen to engage on the side of God's enemies, to stand against the creator of the universe. And it is at this point, yes, for everything else that we have read thus far, it is at this point that God says, "It is done." What's interesting is it is done, that declaration happens before all of the destruction. Is that the point in which there is no turning back? The opportunity for repentance is over. It's at this point that Yahweh himself will engage the enemy. Well, so, so speaking of Passover and, you know, that fourth cup, the cup of the kingdom, right? I think that is going to be happening in the, a couple of chapters from now with the marriage of the Lamb. But speaking of the cross, what were some of the things that happened when Jesus was on the cross? It got dark? Yeah? Was there a report of an earthquake? Yeah, and the veil torn, but he also said, "It is finished." So nice little bookends here. We have one that opens up this amazing opportunity to follow the king freely without happening to go through Jewish conversion and everything that is entailed there. Glacions, thank you very much, Paul, clarifying that. And, but think of that as really kind of the bookends. It's really at the cross, now, only to be really fully understood 40 days later in Peter's sermon, where I mean, just the doors are flung open for people to commit to the Messiah as king. This is the beginning of picking the sides, only for that door to close, here in chapter 16, verse 17. Up until this point, everybody's picking a side. There's no in-between. It's pretty exciting pretty quick, doesn't it? So any questions, any thoughts before we get into 20 here? Not that 20 is like super significant, but it's, that's, that's some things to process there, isn't it? I mean, even just looking at, I mean, I've never heard a sermon that, you know, draws a line between, you know, "It is finished," to "It is done," but extra points to that person, right? That would be amazing. If that ever comes up for me, you have to remind me, all right? Jim, do you have a question? He actually had his hand up a little bit, so it wasn't just assuming. Yeah, but now here, this is what opens the door for destruction, because what, what we're talking about here is death. I mean, when mountains are disappearing and islands are flying away, you know, like, that's, that's a big deal. This is the destruction of the cosmos. Where are those of us who are saved? Where are we at this point? We are safe and sound in the Father's will.
Where does it say that?
Where does it say that?
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Where exactly does it say that?
So either we're dead, right? And depending on how we died, if we've been martyred, well, you got a nice cozy spot under the altar. Once again, we're working with apocalyptic imagery. So is that really the spot for everybody that's been martyred? Or, you know, are we still talking like, is it Hades, Sheol? Or is it, oh, everybody's in heaven, there's a great multitude, and we get to witness maybe some of this, as much as we are able to comprehend it. If you are still alive at this point, I mean, you've earned your, earned your stripes, that's for sure, as much as you've probably had to endure, but you get to witness a whole lot of stuff.
So leave that been raptured away.
So I know we've talked about it.
Sorry, didn't mean to ask.
No, 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 no. If that's where you're going. So I read this, and I think I've talked about this before, it might've been a long time ago, but I do not read a rapture in any way, at any point in the book of Revelation.
Or even in the New Testament.
Or even in the New Testament.
Then where does that?
Or the Old Testament for that matter.
Then where does that theology come from?
Where does that theology come from? Well, maybe that's how we'll kick off next time, because there is a history to it. There really is, and it's important to understand like that context, because theology does not, is not developed in a vacuum. As much as we want to think- As much as we want to think that like, boom, theology just drops right into our laps, which, hey, look! Right? Bible! But even the things that were written, even here in the New Testament, were written as a response. Think of the letters, the things that Paul has to address. It came out of questions that he was already being asked. Or the gospels written to people who are wanting to know about Jesus and what he taught. And so they were communicating what they had recorded. And so as far as like our theology and what that, you know, it develops within a historical and cultural context. Uh, and you can look at early church history, the, you know, patristic studies and everything else that for the first 600 years of the church, and even till today. Like, I mean, theological perspectives are being developed, and we, you know, draw those from scripture, but within this context. Alright? Um, there's a theology on the environment. Thank the last 30 years for that. It's like, oh, well, God created us to be stewards of the earth. Well, all of a sudden, something that really, you know, before the last 30 years was like, well, yeah, I'm farming it. But now it's the question of how are you farming it? Are you taking care of the earth, or are you destroying it? Are you robbing it of its nutrients? Are you replacing those nutrients? How are you doing that? There's a theology of it. There's a theology of work. Where did that come from? Before, I mean, you had to work for somebody, but now in the last hundred years, or more specifically, even in the last probably, I'd say 30 to 40 years, because of the level of affluence that we have had in the United States, the level of really luxury, that there was a theology of work. Oh yeah, that was part of what we were made to do, you know, going back to being stewards of the earth and things like that. I know we're totally off track, but just to understand that like, these things do not happen. And just a little like peek into like, oh, where did the whole idea of the rapture come from? Well, that was developed right after the Civil War. Yeah, so how does First Thessalonians fit into that? So let's go ahead and go there. I know, I said I would wait, and I'm not waiting. Hey, but that's what this class is about, right? Alright, so starting at verse 13. Oh, I'm sorry, First Thessalonians 4, starting at verse 13. "But we do not want you to be uninformed, brethren, about those who are asleep, so that you will not grieve as do the rest who have no hope." Okay, so this is actually tying in with the first part of your question. "For if we believe that Jesus died and rose again, even so God will bring with him those who have fallen asleep with Jesus. For this we say to you by the word of the Lord, that we who are alive and remain until the coming of the Lord will not precede those who have fallen asleep. For the Lord himself will descend from heaven with a shout, with the voice of the archangel, and with the trumpet of God, and the dead in Christ will rise first." So this also goes into our resurrection talk. Is that two weeks ago? "So the dead in Christ will rise first, then we who are alive and remain will be caught up together with them in the clouds to meet the Lord in the air, and so we shall always be with the Lord. Therefore comfort one another with these words." So the term, the phrase there, "caught up," oh! Look what I have right here. Alright. Okay. Let's hear what Dr. Schnabel has to say about this. "So the word rapture is not self-explanatory. Merriam-Webster gives three definitions: one, an expression or manifestation of ecstasy or passion; two, a state or experience of being carried away by overwhelming emotion; or a mystical experience in which the Spirit is exalted to a knowledge of divine things; and three, often capitalized, the final assumption of Christians into heaven during the end time, according to Christian theology. The discussion in this chapter concerns the third meaning, the expectation of the rapture in which all true Christian believers will disappear from earth before the great tribulation, in a miraculous event that will unite them with Jesus in heaven, has been popularized by the Left Behind series." This 16-volume, alright, I'm gonna skip down a little bit. So this view that in the last days, all true believers will be taken up to heaven in a secret rapture, leaving behind a world in chaos, was first articulated by John Nelson Darby in 1830. Darby was an itinerant preacher ordained initially into the Anglican Church of Ireland, who traveled extensively in North America. The fact that this teaching was unknown to the church fathers and the reformers not to speak of all other theologians until the early 19th century does not render it automatically misguided per se. Christians base their convictions neither on the popularity of beliefs nor on the short history of a doctrine, but on what scripture actually says. We will therefore focus in this chapter not so much on the pros and cons of the discussion, but on the most relevant passages, First Thessalonians 4:17. "The verse in question is situated in a section of Paul's first letter to the Christian believers in the city of Thessalonica, in which he addressed the fate of Christians who had died. Paul had established the church of Thessalonica in the last three months of the year AD 49, before being abruptly forced to leave the city for Brea and eventually Athens and Corinth." Now skipping down here, Paul's comment in First Thessalonians 4:13 that he does not want the Thessalonian believers to be uninformed, the following section provides them with information that they did not have. "In this discourse about believers who have died about the coming day of the Lord, Paul first clarifies the fate of believers who have died before reminding of what they already know about the day of the Lord, and how the expectation of Jesus' second coming should inform how they live." So the key passage for any discussion of the rapture is First Thessalonians 4:16 and 17, and thus these verses deserve a closer look. Paul describes the coming of the Lord Jesus as a descent from heaven. He will come down. "If the Thessalonian believers were familiar with the tradition about Jesus's ascension into heaven, they would have known that Jesus was taken up before the eyes of the twelve, that he was taken from them into heaven, and that two men in white robes announced that this same Jesus who had been taken from you into heaven will come back in the same way you have seen him go into heaven. If they were familiar with Jesus's prophecy about the end times and about his return, they would have known Jesus's announcement that at the time when the stars will fall from the sky and the celestial bodies will be shaken, people will see the Son of Man coming in the clouds with great power and glory." Mark chapter 13, verse 26. "Without specific information to the contrary, Paul's readers connected his description of Jesus's coming down from heaven as the fulfillment of the prophecy that he will come from heaven in the same way in which he had gone into heaven." Three elements in First Thessalonians 4:16 confirm that Paul is not speaking of a secret coming. Actually, I'm gonna skip just because the main word here is "to be caught up." So Paul asserts that the living believers on earth will be caught up. The phrase "we who are still alive" describes Christian believers who are alive when Jesus comes from heaven to earth. The explicit personal pronoun "we" in the Greek sentence suggests that Paul thought it possible that he might be among those who will live long enough to experience Jesus's return. If you're not familiar with that idea, all of the apostles thought they were living in the end times. Why would they think that? Because the Messiah had showed up. In the same way that Jesus, if he would appear today, we would all think, huh, this is it! This is like 110%, you could not convince me otherwise, this is it, this is the end. Okay, that's exactly what they thought. I mean, they thought he was gonna come and wipe out Rome. Exactly what we're reading, they all thought was going to happen in the first century. So the clarifying phrase, "we who are left", describes the living believers in contrast to deceased believers, whose death triggered the necessity that Paul had to write about these matters. "The believers who are alive when Jesus comes are the remainder of those who believe." The next phrase in the Greek sentence is "together with them," or simultaneous with them, referring to the deceased believers. This is Paul's point of the entire passage. "The deceased believers will have no disadvantage. They will meet Jesus at the same time as the believers who are still alive when Jesus comes." The verb translated "caught up" often has the sense of a sudden and violent action, and can be translated as "snatched." So this is actually, in the Latin, it's translated as "raptus", hence the term "rapture," that's where that comes from. In the Greek, it's "harpazo." "The connotation of violent action is not always present, however. The meaning of the verb, as used in many passages in Greek literature, can be defined as to grab or seize suddenly, so as to remove or gain control, which can be done with force or simply in such a way that no resistance is offered. The Greek verb is regularly used in funerary inscriptions and in letters of consolation to lament the fact that fate had snatched, harpazo, away the deceased from their loved ones to Hades." So the term that's used there is often used in funerals, on gravestones, that they had been snatched or taken away. Fate, death had taken them away from their loved ones. Paul consoles the Thessalonian believers, not by lamenting the fact that death had snatched away their loved ones, but in a deliberate twist, by asserting that God will snatch up the living believers at the same time as he will raise the dead back to eternal life. So the phrase here, "in the clouds," corresponds to the following description of meeting the Lord who comes down from heaven in the air. Paul's language echoes Daniel chapter 7, we just can't get away from Daniel 7, can we? Verse 13, "where the one, like a son of man, is coming with the clouds of heaven." The following description in Daniel 7 describes the event as universal. "He was given authority, glory, and sovereign power; all nations and peoples of every language worshipped him. His dominion is an everlasting dominion that will not pass away, and his kingdom is one that will never be destroyed." This passage is important because Jesus establishes a connection between his coming as the Son of Man in glory, and Daniel's Son of Man. Mark chapter 13, verse 26. Luke describes Jesus's ascent to heaven with the statement, "A cloud hid him from their sight." So the purpose of the rapture of the believers who are alive together with the believers who have died is to meet the Lord. The noun that Paul uses here is often taken as a technical term that describes a dignitary who pays an official visit to a city, denoting the action of the leading citizens in going out to meet him and escorting him back on the final stage of his journey. Everybody catch that? So, the whole idea here, to meet the Lord, and that's the part, to meet the Lord in the air, right? To meet the Lord, that phrase is used. It's a technical term that describes a dignitary who pays an official visit to a city, denoting the action of the leading citizens in going out to meet him and escort him back on the final stage of his journey, back into the city, not someplace else. This interpretation has been effectively criticized on the grounds that "meeting" is not a technical term, and that the formal elements of such receptions mentioned in Hellenistic sources are missing from First Thessalonians 4:17. For example, there's no reference to a return of Jesus to earth with those who meet him in the air. The fact that Paul seems to leave Jesus and the raptured and risen believers up in the air should not overly concern us. There are only two passages in which Paul locates the final destiny of the believers as in heaven. That's 2 Corinthians 5:1 and Colossians 1:5. "It seems that Paul has almost no interest whatever in our final eschatological geography; rather his interest is altogether personal, having to do with their being with the Lord." So, that is something that I have heard a number of times, is that the word there, "to meet the Lord," is one where you go out to receive him in. And this is actually something that happens in different cultures today. So in the same way, if you found out President Biden, Trump, whoever was coming to town, and you knew what route they were coming, people would probably start lining the road and waving flags and, but then after they pass by, are you heading away from the city? No, you're going in, there's probably gonna be a rally, and you wanna bring them in, right? And you wanna go out and show your support and love. And there's actually a story, I just heard this. In India, there was a famous like governor over a province, and he was, oh, no, no, it wasn't a governor, it was a, like a billionaire, and he was coming back to his hometown. Okay, and mind you, you know, this guy's, you know, he's in a really nice car, he's got his own driver, everything else. All the people of the city, people that he grew up with, all the different, they came out of the village, met him like six miles outside of the village. And they greeted him there, and they told them to shut off the car so that they could pull the car into the city. To have that honor of receiving him and to be part of the entourage, to bring him into the city with honor. And so that's the idea here, is that when we are meeting the Lord, we are coming up to receive him in. And I think it's one of those where we can connect these dots, that what we are reading is Jesus coming back. What we're reading in Revelation connects with this, where there are those of us who are alive at his return, but then the dead in Christ come back to life. Now, this is what I would contend is a first resurrection. Those who will rule and reign with him, whether it's for the thousand years, and if, you know, if that is something that you want to maintain theologically, we have no control of how that's gonna sort out, right? If we believe that it's just one and done, and that there's not gonna be an uprising at the end of a thousand years, and then boom, everything's remade again? But what we're, it seems to be, we're reading here, is that as Jesus comes, those of us who see what's happening, we receive him in. We're not going to hide. This is our salvation coming to us, probably at our darkest hour, as all the nations are aligning against us. Imagine, if you will, that it is Jesus coming in the clouds, and all of this other stuff is happening. All of a sudden, there's lightning, all of a sudden, there's thunder. We're seeing hailstones drop, probably on the approaching army. There's trumpets sounding. There's trumpets sounding, yeah, all of that. So, so that is the idea here, is that we are not going away. This is the beginning of conquest. Roy?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this what happened at the resurrection of Christ? The dead king alike?
Come on, yes, that's exactly right. So those, everything that we have recorded about the resurrection and all the little details, remember, those are there for us, right? They were written to believers, and it has continued to be a testimony for 2,000 years. But when what we are meant to understand, what the author wants us to understand, it's a little glimpse of what is to come. That's exactly it, Roy, absolutely. So as Jesus comes back to life, and all of a sudden, there's these reports of like dead people, long-dead people, saints, right? Coming into the city, and everybody's like, you're, you're supposed to be dead. You know, and, and all of a sudden, it's a testimony. I mean, I could only imagine, like, did these individuals know why they came back? Like, I mean, could you imagine if they were pre, no, it wasn't the zombie apocalypse, quit that. So, but, but really though, like, I mean, this, it's a glimpse of what is to come. Because odds are, like, they weren't, you know, probably, probably didn't look like a zombie apocalypse where there's like bone showing and, you know, just all the rot and everything else. What if they were completely remade? And coming into the city like that? Like, the level of, once again, the level of power.
So they're not going up to heaven either then?
Okay, so logistically, once again, this is Luke's theology. It doesn't have to be yours, right? But the way I read these things, so it's to the comment of like, oh, well, they weren't in heaven because they just came right back to life and walked into the city. This is why I hold to like the idea of Hades or Sheol, like a place of the dead. If you would have asked them, hey, how long have you been dead? They probably would have said, I don't know, I just closed my eyes. Right? It's not like they were counting how many times the sun came up and down.
Except if you were talking to Elijah or Enoch, maybe.
Maybe, maybe, right, right? So, yeah, no, and that's fair, and so, but, so that's why we don't see a whole bunch of other people coming down, but instead coming up. That the resurrection happens from the earth, because that is where people have been placed. So, just in my tiny little brain, logistically, that's how that just makes sense. So, but I also think that's super cool and gives the opportunity for the remade bodies, because even if somebody was cremated or any of the other things that you might think of, or, you know, whatever, they are being completely remade. If God could do it with Adam from scratch, he could do it with each and every one of us, right? Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, so sort of going back around there with the rapture. I just don't see that there's a mass disappearance of believers. I think God has us here to persevere and to endure and to be a continual witness. That is what we are here for. Not to take us away and out of it. Because, and that's what makes what we're reading in Revelation so significant, when God says, "it is done", and then is exacting judgment on the earth. Wow, it is up until that point, we have a mission. And it's at that point when God speaks, that's mission completed. Because we can't save people. We are just the messengers to go out and to share the good news, to share the hope we have in Christ. The promise, the hope of eternity, and the free forgiveness, the free grace of God, to atone for all of our sins. That's the message we can go out. What he wants in return is our allegiance to him. That's how all of this gets wrapped up in a nice bow. So, and, and this is something that like, once again, I mean, if never heard this, this, this was really heavy. Yeah, eternity's at stake. All of a sudden, like, that seems a lot bigger than 401Ks, right? Or who's winning a presidential election, or whatever else it might be. Because regardless, rain or shine, we've got a mission. There's people out there that need saved. Even for us who are in Christ, there's a continual challenge of, am I repenting of how much I'm infected by the world? For the glory of God, knowing the price that has been paid for my life, am I walking in the holiness that God is calling me to? To be a light that shines that much brighter for the world to see? To share that hope? Am I living out the hope that has he has given me? Or is that light being stifled by the cares of this world? That tug of war? Yep, all right, so Matthew 24, starting at verse 29. "But immediately after the tribulation of those days, the sun will be darkened, and the moon will not give its light, and the stars will fall from the sky." Does everybody remember that from Joel, chapter 2? "And the powers of the heavens will be shaken. And then the sign of the Son of Man will appear in the sky, and then all the tribes of the earth will mourn. And they will see the Son of Man coming on the clouds of the sky with power and great glory. And he will send forth his angels with a great trumpet, and they will gather together his elect from the four winds, from one end of the sky to the other." Now, what's he gathering them for? To take them out of trouble? Or is he gathering his army? So let's read on. "Now learn the parable from the fig tree, when its branch has already become tender, and puts forth its leaves, you know that summer is near. So you too, when you see all these things, recognize that he is near, right at the door. Truly I say to you, this generation will not pass away until all these things take place. Heaven and earth will pass away, but my words will not pass away. But of that day and hour, no one knows, not even the angels of heaven, nor the sun, but the Father alone. The coming of the Son of Man will be just like the days of Noah. For as in those days before the flood, they were eating and drinking, marrying and giving in marriage, until the day that Noah entered the ark. And they did not understand, until the flood came and took them all away, so will the coming of the Son of Man be. Then there will be two men in the field; one will be taken, and one will be left. Two women will be grinding at the mill; one will be taken, and one will be left." So this isn't a rapture, it's being taken into heaven, but this is the son coming back, gathering his army, and landing on Mount of Olives. This is how the forces of heaven become united right there outside the city. So think back last week, Battle of Armageddon. It's not all the big bad guys gathering together by themselves. They're going against God's people, who are there, coming out of that city. How did they all get there? Were they all gathered up before? No, this is Jesus coming back, gathering his people from throughout the earth, and landing there. So when we go out to receive him in, as he touches down on the earth. So this isn't being taken out of the fight, just the opposite. This is Minuteman call up into the fight. But rest assured, the fight is already the Lord's. That's what we just read in 16. Whether it be with earthquakes, hailstones, everything else. If you're like, hailstones, how does that work? Well, you can go back to Joshua, because it happened already. And the Lord got credit for killing more with hailstones than with the sword. So, now, then there's the be ready for his coming, couple parables, parable of the ten virgins, parable of the talents. So all of that coming together. Does everybody kind of see that? Now, once again, we could totally disagree and still be in fellowship. Because the only choice I have in all of this is in my day-to-day life, and how I'm living. Am I living for the glory of the Lord and building his kingdom? Or am I living for my own glory and building my own kingdom? Am I working for the rewards of heaven? Or have I already received all of my rewards here on the earth? So, that is the only part in this whole equation that I have control over. That's the only part that you guys have control over. As far as who's called up when, and what that even looks like, it will all sort itself out because God will make it so. So rest assured in that, you're not going to be late for anything. And you're not going to miss the bus either. So, does anybody have any questions on that? Maybe that's a view that you've never heard before or put all that together. But maybe you can all walk out here and be like, wow, that's how Luke reads the Bible. So, any questions? Okay, all right. I'll try not to get self-conscious. All right, well, let's go ahead and look at verse 20. We're going to get back to Revelation 16. We get past 21, it's just gravy after that, right? It's just icing on the cake, so. Verse 20, "and every island fled away, and the mountains were not found." Actually, I just want to make sure, so everybody that asks questions, you know, right there up to the break, everybody kind of get an answer. It might not be the one you like, might not be complete, but got an answer, right? Everybody good? Okay, all right. Well, sort of, it's to the north there, the Jezreel Valley and at Megiddo. So if what we see, what we know, so just connecting dots, right? We have Jesus's return on the Mount of Olives. Well, yeah, the Muslims had blocked up the, the door and, yeah, and put a graveyard out there because Messiah would never render himself unclean and enter into the temple precinct. They weren't counting on a resurrection. Checkmate. So, but yeah, and, I mean, in past ancient history, but there was actually a bridge across there, and, you know, across the span of that valley. So, what's that all going to look like at that time? Yeah, so you have, you have all the enemy armies amassing there at Megiddo, or in that Jezreel Valley. Kings from the east coming over, Rome coming over, as it was envisioned, just everybody playing their part. So we'll continue with Rome, kings of the east, if you want to say Parthia, however that works, right? Coming into the Jezreel Valley. You have the people of God there in the city, and so imagining Messiah returning on the Mount of Olives. They don't have to go up face to face, because it's probably in that valley. Imagine, if you will, during the millennial reign, it's like, oh yeah, the Valley of Hailstones. Or it's no longer a valley. You just can't farm it. Boulder Pass, however you want to say, you know? So like, I mean, that's, that's the thing, right? Is that what you're witnessing is that level of destruction of the enemy armies. It's not the destruction of the people of God. It is, yeah.
But earthquake is more in a different place?
Well, it sounds like the earthquake is the world over.
Okay.
Because that's what we're going to get to, is it's not just Rome in three parts. It's the cities of the earth, like, falling. Because those are seen as extensions of the power of Rome. Yeah, so, so we are talking about the systematic dismantling of an empire. The military's taken care of, the capital city's taken care of, all of the outlying power centers, the important cities are all taken care of. If you want to look at, so verse 20, "and every island fled away, and the mountains were not found." Like, that just shows how, like, I mean, it wasn't just a normal earthquake. The mountains disappeared, right? The, the islands, the, you know, as they were traversing the Mediterranean, and they know that they get half safe harbor there. It's like, hey, I've been sailing these waters for the last 50 years. There should be an island here. Oh yeah, remember that earthquake? Hasn't been here since then. I mean, you know, it's kind of having your own little aquarium or something, and you had, you know, maybe some of the sand and the rocks kind of built up, you know, create a little atoll on top. And then all of a sudden, you just take the aquarium and just shake it all, and all of a sudden, it's like, whoop, everything's at the bottom.
I think we should have demonstration.
For my next demonstration? So, but I mean, you know, so what we're reading here is, and mind you, this isn't our first time reading this, we've already went through the trumpet judgments. We've already kind of been touching on some of this. Now, we're going to read all of this again in greater detail. We're going to read in greater detail what happens to these characters, to these individuals. With, as we do that in the following chapters, as you go forward in your Christian walk, in the days and weeks, months, years, decades to come, and you see people that may be fit this description, in your mind, you can know their fate. Like, that's the level of empowerment that the word of God brings in knowing that as people are getting away with injustice and persecuting the church, to know what their fate is. And that's what puts that much more emphasis on eternity for us. And hopefully, that enables us that even at the worst and most darkest moment, knowing their fate, those who have taken the mark or whatever, that we can still preach Christ to them. That is the experience That is the experience of the early church. That's how Paul could be imprisoned and still share Christ. He was being imprisoned by extensions of Rome, by Roman soldiers and guards. They had taken that mark, they had burned incense to Caesar for years. Pledged their loyalty and allegiance, and yet, he shares the gospel with them, and they believe. So, it's seeing eternity, keeping that in mind. Here, we don't see angels participating. It's primarily the earthquake and the hailstones.
So, but they're pouring out, I mean, they're carrying out what he's saying.
If they're the ones slinging the hailstones, I'm sure that counts.
If God's people were going to be involved in that.
Yeah, so, two thoughts. One, we don't explicitly see that fighting with God's people taking up swords, different things like that. There's some Old Testament prophecies that would look at that, that, that would, that sounds much more like that. Second thought is referring back to that battle, where God, you know, where Joshua is fighting, I believe it was with the Amalekites, and God was throwing down the hailstones that just so happened to only hit the enemy, and not any of the Israelites. So, they were still out there fighting that battle, and yet, God was still assisting them. And more had perished due to the hailstones than by the sword. So, it could be a situation like that. So, once again, I think we had talked about this some time ago, but, you know, that is absolutely something to, to reconcile. What, you know, the role of violence, what does that look like? You know, within the theology of a Christian. So, and that's, that would be a whole nother class. We can read through all of that and wrestle with that, so. But, you know, because for some, for a lot of people, that's just not even on the table of, you know, a Christian participating in the retaking of the earth, anything like that. But, I think it's within, it's within the spectrum of possibility here. So, if I was chewing on that one, I can see your faces. So, yeah, so, everybody ready for verse 20? Okay, alright. "And every island fled away, and the mountains were not found." So, "When the sixth seal was opened, there followed a great earthquake, dramatic cosmic disturbances, and every mountain and island was removed from its place." Chapter 6, verse 12 through 14. Do I need to remind you that we're reading the same thing over, right? So, I know I'm just, it's like, boy, you know, when you're speaking in public and you come up with some of those phrases, like beating a dead horse, you're like, wow, that's really not appropriate, is it? I mean, I think we've all heard it, and so we're like, oh, you get a little grace for that, but you know, when, public speaking, and you just, huh, that's really morbid. Can't really say that, can I? Sorry. I'm glad we've been on this journey together for a few years. Thanks, guys. So anyways, but just understanding the layering of Revelation. There you go, that's all I'm going to say about that. So, "Likewise, the great earthquake of the seventh bowl causes every island to flee away and the mountains to disappear. Some writers see in the reference to the removal of every island an allusion to the author's imprisonment on the island of Patmos." John's like, yeah, send this prison away. Others find eschatological hostility toward mountains due to prophetic denunciation of high places. You know, all those places where all the other gods were worshipped, wiped out. "But the references are probably general in nature in representing the devastating effects of the tremendously violent earthquake." Similar indications of the end are found in the Assumption of Moses, chapter 10, verse 4, and 1 Enoch, 1:6. So, apocryphal words, or pseudographic, pseudographical. "In Revelation 20, verse 11, the earth and sky flee away before the presence of the one who sits upon the great white throne." Verse 21, "And huge hailstones, about 100 pounds each, came down from heaven upon men, and men blasphemed God because of the plague of the hail, because its plague was extremely severe. So, the storm of divine wrath reaches its climax with 100-pound hailstones falling from the sky upon people. In the Old Testament, God repeatedly punished the enemies of His people with hail. As the armies of the five kings fled before Joshua, God cast down great hailstones, killing more than died by the sword." Joshua, chapter 10, verse 11. Ezekiel prophesied against Gog, "A great shaking in the land with torrential rain and hailstones." Everybody remember that from last week? I mean, not that you would be expected to remember Ezekiel 38, but still, like, there was reference to hailstones last week. "Hail was part of the accepted arsenal of divine retaliation." Missiles from God. There you go. So, Ezekiel 38, let's go there just, just as a refresher. 18 through 22. Ezekiel 38, bless you. "It will come about on that day when Gog comes against the land of Israel, declares Yahweh Elohim, that my fury will mount up in my anger, in my zeal and in my blazing wrath, I declare that on that day there will surely be a great earthquake in the land of Israel. The fish of the sea, the birds of the heavens, the beast of the field, all the creeping things that creep on the earth, and all the men who are on the face of the earth will shake at my presence." Which is a really cool way of saying, like, you know, it's that storm-theophany, right? Where he comes down, and like, you know, we, shaking in fear? No, they're literally shaking, the earth is shaking because God showed up. It's a little tongue-in-cheek, but you know. "The mountains also will be thrown down, the steep pathways will collapse, and every wall will fall to the ground." "I will call for a sword against him on all my mountains, declares Yahweh Elohim. Every man's sword will be against his brother. With pestilence and with blood, I will enter into judgment with him, and I will reign on him and on, and on his troops, and on the many peoples who are with him. A torrential rain with hailstorms, hailstones, fire and brimstone. I will magnify myself, sanctify myself, and make myself known in the sight of many nations, and they will know that I am Yahweh." You know, verse 23 is, I mean, it just reads, it's very cool, it's, it's, you know? But man, that's a threat. That is a threat. That is like the most righteous threat you can just read in the Bible. "I will magnify myself, sanctify myself, and make myself known in the sight of many nations, and they will know that I am Yahweh." You could read that and be like, oh, did Jesus say that? Or, you know, something like, no, after what we just read, it's like, I'm going to annihilate everybody. So, hey, Ezekiel for you, there you go. Alright. Remember, remember what we're reading, it is extremely violent, but this is the violent end of violent people who stand in rebellion against God, who did not want peace, who hated God, and hate everything about God and God's people. Remember, don't be surprised if the world hates you, they hated Jesus first. If the world loves you, better think long and hard about it. So, alright. "So, the plague of hail produces no change, and those who dwell on the earth, after each of the three final plagues, people blaspheme God." So, chapter 16, verse 9. "Men were scorched with fierce heat, and they blasphemed the name of God, who has the power over these plagues, and they did not repent, so as to give Him glory." Verse 11, "Because the kingdom had become dark." So, verse 10 and 11, "Then the fifth angel poured out his bowl on the throne of the beast, and his kingdom became darkened, and they gnawed their tongues because of pain, and they blasphemed the God of heaven because of their pains and their sores, and they did not repent of their deeds." So, that's number four and five, and now, seven, they're blaspheming God again. "So, even the exceedingly great hail fails to shatter their confidence in the kingship of Apollion, the angel of the abyss." Reference in chapter 9, verse 11. "And bring them to acknowledge the sovereignty of the God of heaven." Mount says, "Their Faustian bargain has transformed them into blasphemers who carry out to the end the hatred of the beast for God." "With this vision, the revelation might have come to an end in terms of God's judgments, but the vision does not end here. What follows is an extended description of Rome as a luxurious prostitute who meets a gruesome death at the hands of the scarlet beast she commands." This is chapter 17. "The demise of the great city is then described in chapter 18 as a great funeral dirge, complete with the mourning of kings, merchants, merchants, and all seafaring people, whose livelihood depended upon Rome's insatiable appetite for extravagance." Both chapters spell out in detail what is involved in the final bowl judgment. 17 and 18 are wrapped up in what we have just read as the final bowl judgment. Just letting you think about that one for a second. Because, because it's a little weird to read this and be like, well, isn't this all happening in consecutive order? It's not. It's not. What we're going to read over the next two chapters is the instant of what we have just read in the last five verses. The three, the four verses before that took place in verse 12. So, alright, we have just a little bit of time. Well, without having Lucas in front of me. Yeah, looking at verse 21 there. So, there's a asterisk, there's two of them there. Right before "came down" in verse 21, "came down from heaven," and then, right before "was extremely severe." So, alright, well, everybody up for reading 17?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Corbin. Has tonight already been too much? It's, it is a lot, it is a lot to wrestle with. And I mean, feel free, like, I mean, we can talk through this a little bit more. Not that this needs to turn into a counseling session, a theological counseling session, but, you know? Come on. So, alright. You've got too much to recover after this. And then we come back in, "The Doom of Babylon," right? Everybody's like, oh, it's August, it's time, oh yeah, that's what we're reading. Alright, "The Doom of Babylon." "Then one of the seven angels, who had the seven bowls, came and spoke with me, saying, 'Come here, I will show you the judgment of the great harlot who sits on many waters, with whom the kings of the earth committed acts of immorality, and those who dwell on the earth were made drunk with the wine of her immorality.'" "And he carried me away in the spirit into a wilderness, and I saw a woman sitting on a scarlet beast, full of blasphemous names, having seven heads and ten horns. The woman was clothed in purple and scarlet, and adorned with gold and precious stones and pearls, having in her hand a gold cup full of abominations and of the unclean things of her immorality. And on her forehead a name was written, a mystery, Babylon the Great, the mother of harlots and of the abominations of the earth. And I saw the woman drunk with the blood of the saints and with the blood of the witnesses of Jesus. When I saw her, I wondered greatly. And the angel said to me, 'Why do you wonder? I will tell you the mystery of the woman and of the beast that carries her, which has the seven heads and the ten horns. The beast that you saw was, and is not, and is about to come up out of the abyss and go to destruction. And those who dwell on the earth, whose name has not been written in the book of life from the foundation of the world, will wonder when they see the beast, that he was and is not and will come. Here is the mind which has wisdom, the seven heads are seven mountains on which the woman sits, and they are seven kings; five have fallen, one is; the other has not yet come; and when he comes, he must remain a little while. The beast, which was and is not, is himself also an ape, and is one of the seven; and he goes to destruction. The ten horns which you saw are ten kings, who have not yet received a kingdom, but they receive authority as kings with the beast for one hour. These have one purpose, and they give their power and authority to the beast. These will wage war against the Lamb, and the Lamb will overcome them because he is lord of lords and king of kings. And those who are with him are the called and chosen and faithful. And he said to me, 'The waters which you saw where the harlot sits are peoples and multitudes and nations and tongues; and the ten horns which you saw, and the beast, these will hate the harlot and will make her desolate and naked, and will eat her flesh and will burn her up with fire. For God has put it in their hearts to execute His purpose by having a common purpose and by giving their kingdom to the beast, en door hun reis aan de beast te geven, totdat de woorden van God worden volledig volgen. De vrouw die je zag, is de grote stad, die reis over de kreeks van de lande. Ik denk dat er een paar dingen te discussiëren zijn daar. Just een paar. Dus, dus dan gaan we naar 18, Babylon is gevallen, lament voor Babylon. Maar dan kijkt alles op daaruit. En let je op, dit is allemaal nog steeds op, toch? Het is gewoon echt zwart. Maar 19, 20, 21, 22. Het is allemaal zon en ruis, jongens. Het zijn gewoon de volgende twee chapters die wat we net gelezen hebben in 17. Of, ik ben sorry, in 16. Dat zevente bol van racht. Dit is wat we gaan in over de volgende twee chapters. Dus, ja, na alle deze plagen en alles, hoe kan iemand nog blijven? Dus... Ja, dat was tijdens een paar van die. Ja, dus dit is, we waren, we waren over dit aan verschillende momenten. Maar zelfs in verhaal van het Romeinische Empire, Rome had het hele wereld niet controleerd. Het zag eruit, maar ze hadden het niet. Dus toen bevoel wordt gegeven op Rome, gewoon denken, zoals in het context van John, zou er nog steeds een beetje van de wereld niet opgevonden zijn. Maar ze zouden nog steeds een beetje van de effecten voelen. Je weet, als je in Zuid-Afrika leeft, en je hoorde over het mediterraneen om bloed te gaan, doodmanenbloed, niet gewoon gewone bloed, doodmanenbloed, we hebben geen Kool-Aid, we hebben het als... Ja, we waren daar. Dus, je weet, zoals, whoa. Je hoorde dit en je hoorde hoe het Romeinische Empire gewoon naar zijn knieën is gegaan. Dan heb je de wind gehaald van alle deze armes die opgevallen zijn in Israël om gewoon eens en voor altijd de laatste vestigen van christenen te weggewinnen. En dan hoor je over halsstenen.
Dus dit is alsof het Egyptisch ding is.
Recht.
Iedereen hoorde over het.
Oh, oh ja, dit is wat gaat geven, zoals, we lezen het voordat het gebeurt, maar dit is wat gaat geven in eeuwelijkheid, in dezelfde manier als we de Oude Testament lezen, en het is alsof God continu zijn mensen zegt: "Bekijk wat ik heb gedaan in Egypte voor je." Je bent als: "Bekijk wat ik heb gedaan aan het empire dat je gelukkige mensen doden, dat je zo zwaar beperkte, bekijk hoe ik ze weggewikkeld heb." En we betrekken hem, gooien kruinen aan zijn voeten, absoluut. Dus, maar tot jouw punt, kan dit een, zoals, regionaal, een hemisferen van invloed zijn? Of zal dit echt wereldwijd zijn, waar de beast invloed, een soort moderne Romeinische dorp, moderne Romeinische dorp, waar het dat niveau van invloed heeft? Je weet, misschien is het een, zoals, ik wil niet daarheen, maar, zoals, alleen voor een voorbeeld, zoals United Nations of iets zoals dat, waar is een multi-nation geconglomerate, toch? Dat heeft autoriteit aan een bestuuringsbody gegeven. YouTube, ben kind, ik zeg niet dat dat het is. Ik wil niet weggaan van het historische context, maar als we het modernere traderen, ik bedoel, verwacht je als Hitler zijn weg got. Recht? Hij had plannen voor de wereld. Ik bedoel, de VS zou worden gebouwd, je weet, al dat. Dus, je weet, ja, zoals, dus het kan een nation zijn, maar het kan ook een bestuuringsbody zijn dat heeft, dat brengt tien kreeks, en ze geven allemaal autoriteit aan deze ene persoon om ze te leiden, of wat ook. Dus het kan wereldwijd zijn, maar ik denk niet dat er iets fout zou zijn met het zijn, zoals, binnen een hemisfer. In elk geval, de zandwolken zullen iedereen de aandacht krijgen. Als montsen verdwijnen, voel je dat niet alleen lokaal. Als Everest verdwijnt, voelen we het in Indiana. Dat is een tektonische verandering van insane proportions. Dus, dat is juist, je moet terug in augustus voor dat. Maar, dus lezen in Zephaniair, zoals, de mensen van de lande komen en de feest van boots gebeuren, en als ze dat niet, let je op, deze zijn gekregen mensen. Deze zijn niet de mensen van God, deze zijn gekregen mensen. En als ze dat niet gebeuren, hebben ze geen regering voor het volgende jaar. Waarom zegt het dat? Dus... Dus als we de profeten lezen, als we de revelation lezen, als we Jesus' woorden lezen, en, je weet, vooral het discours van Oliver, zoals, er is veel om met te strijden, toch? Er is veel ruimte voor ongelukkigheid over hoe deze dingen uitgaan. Maar zoals ik al zei, het blijft vertrouwens. Eigenlijk hebben we het vertrouwens en de gekozen, de gevraagd, de gekozen, en de vertrouwens, toch? De mensen die met hem zijn. Dat is onze admonition. Te weten dat we gevraagd zijn, dat we gekozen zijn, en dat we gevraagd zijn en gekozen zijn om vertrouwens te hebben. Dag in en dag uit, wat is dat eruitkomen in onze levens? En het is niet iets dat we moeten creëren, dat constructe onszelfs. We kunnen praten en zoeken de lord, en volgen de leiding van zijn geest. Lezen zijn woord, en continu bevolgd. En we kunnen dat, ongeacht wat de wereld ons zegt, en zelfs cultuurse christaan. Cultuurse christaan is niet de metronom voor onze vertrouwens aan God. Het is tussen zijn woord en zijn geest. We leven volgens zijn standaard, niet een collectieve begrip, en gebruik dat als een omschrijving.